Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving. Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School District December 3 regular school board meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Maribel.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Middleton. Trustee Enga.
Here.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Kerwin.
Present.
VP Kelly.
Here.
President Saunders.
Here.
We have our quorum and our student trustee De Grand Prix.
Here.
There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Maqiba Lucio.
I come forth with some concerns that, if possible, I would like an immediate response to instead of a reply at the next meeting under O Business. I have copies of the questions if you would like a copy at the end of my public comments. Presently, I work the Academic Power Hour, APH After-School Program. On November 18, the first round of time sheets dated November 1 through the 15 was hand-delivered to the district office from Benjamin Turner Academy to meet the November 19 time sheet submission date for November 27 payroll. This information is based on 2024-2025 payroll schedule for semi-monthly payroll for all employees. On November 27, my pay stub did not reflect my earnings for the APH program. Rumors started to surface based on inside contacts with payroll. The first rumor was that the grant check did not clear, and that is why APH time sheets were not processed. The second rumor was circulated that the time sheets were on hold until students' attendance could be confirmed. This made me wonder with the first rumor, what happened to transparency? On or before that date, no email was sent, and there was no communication from payroll to APH administrators that processing would be delayed. Prior to this, there was another rumor that the district did not have enough funds to satisfy payroll to the end of this year, December 15 or December 30 payroll dates. Logically, I thought this could not possibly happen because complaints could be filed with the Department of Labor. At the November 20 board meeting, trustee Maribel made valid points of the consequences of knowing and not knowing and how the community and constituents pay the ultimate price. So when the APH funds were not processed, this breathed life that there might be truth with payroll rumors. Immediately, I wanted answers. I wanted the truth and decided not to rely on rumors but to come forth tonight. An update. On Monday, yesterday, December 2, an email was sent with a timestamp of 3:22 p.m. that a live check from the Grant Department can be picked up at the Board of Education. Today, I did receive my first check. One problem I noticed was federal income taxes were not taken out. One coworker stated that with a grant, federal income taxes are not taken out. I don't know if this is true. I do have five questions I would like a response, and I do have copies if you would like to reply to them. And I will distribute them at the end of the comment. Does the district have the funds to satisfy payroll without any interruptions through this school year ending June 30, 2025? The confusion was the language. Was the loan for the end of the year or the end of the school year? Question two, was there a grant for the Academic Power Hour? And if so, did the check fully clear? If not, when will the check clear? Once the check is clear, will there be any interruptions with payroll processing? Question three, for my next question, I would like confirmation because in the past, this was the case. If all students or a certain percentage of students are absent from the Academic Power Hour, do employees still get paid? Four, question four, with a grant fund, are federal income taxes taken out? If yes, no federal income taxes were taken out of my paycheck. Therefore, this is an error, and I will contact payroll based on your response. And the last question, will future APH checks, Academic Power Hour checks, be separated from the regular semi-monthly payroll checks? That is all. Thank you for my time. You're welcome.
Thank you. I'd like her to hand her questions up to us. Yes, please. Give them to the district clerk, please. Our next speaker is Norman Hauptmann.
Norman Hauptmann, Yonkers, New York. I'm a member of the Silent Moment, Inc. The clock should start. Please start the clock. Thank you. Silent Moment, Inc. is a nonprofit that promotes a silent minute in the schools that adopt it. No teacher intervention, no teacher at all. PA system will have a silent moment, one minute, at the desk. Yonkers is doing it. They report good results. Good results. New Rochelle is doing it. We want you to do it. Is there a scientific basis for it? Paul Safran, Ph.D. What does science say about the brain during quiet time? It weighs just three pounds, and if you're an average adult, it's wrinkled like a walnut. The brain is actively internalizing and evaluating information during silence. Silence relieves stress and tension, calms my soul, replenishes cognitive resources. Silence isn't empty, it's full of answers. Gives yourself new opportunities each day. A letter of appreciation from a school student, a student. Age seven, grade two. Our quiet moment is awesome because you get time to think about you and your family. I love that you made this quiet moment up. Thank you very much. Can we do it for two minutes instead? Okay, please consider strongly this opportunity to do it. Yonkers is, and many schools are doing it. By the way, it's optional in this state. Certain states mandate all the schools to do it. And there's an option for the student to go to the family, brother, sister, mother, father. What should I meditate on tomorrow? Let's start small. Give it a trial period. Start a couple of schools. That's what Dr. Quisada told me many years ago. When he said we'll start with two schools, you know what I did? I walked right out of his office because when you got the sale, you leave. I hope I got the sale with you. The other thing, I represent three items. Moment of silence, which I mentioned. Signage, there's a sign in the hallway which the Honorable Ms. Rhodes had told me is part of our program. Thank you for putting that up. We need more of those signs. How about entering the school building and seeing this? Or something that you create that's similar. Give people who enter, including the teachers, a lift. You want to be bold, put it right on the front of the wall of the classroom. You've got TikTok and all these negative programs in the brains of the kids. Let's give them what they need. So those are the signs. And the third thing is a wonderful woman whose son was killed in December 14, 2012. Jessie Lewis, along with 25 people, were murdered in Newtown, Connecticut. She wants to come and speak to you. So you'll have an option to put in "Choose Love." You can have a moment of, a minute of silence and "Choose Love." 3029A is the law that allows you to do Moment of Silence. Jessie, Scarlett Lewis wants to speak to you. I'll send you a letter. It's a pleasure. You get better every day.
Jessica Hancock.
Good evening, trustee members and acting superintendent. My name is Jonathan Booker, and I am a parent of two children at Honor Academy. I am truly disheartened by the news of possible closures of three schools in the most heavily populated area of Mount Vernon. My children begin their educational path at Graham Elementary and pre-K, and after six years of fighting for better treatment of the children and families in Graham, we finally threw on our hats and requested a transfer. This September, my daughter began her year as a fifth grader, and my son is a third grader at Honor. We were greeted by familiar faces, all of whom found the fight at Graham to be exhausting to continue. Over the summer, we learned that our daughter's friends, friend group, transferred out of the district to escape the less-than-standard curriculum this district presents as favorable. Thank you. This experience brought to light the true nature of the low enrollment in Mount Vernon City School District. This district put forth an overhaul of the curriculum, eliminating a learning standard that was straightforward and able to be supported by the parents at home. Although the new curriculum was meant to be, to make the material easier to retain, it instead created a black hole of under-supported children. How can you put down the parents for not reinforcing what the children are learning in school if you haven't shared the material with the parents? My wife proposed to Graham four years ago, a program to bring the parents up to date with the current math curriculum to properly equip parents with the tools to support the children. It is nice to see that that is finally being used. Since the new curriculum was presented, year after year, you have continued to trickle back the learning standard that we were taught as children. Let's be clear. After the new curriculum, Mount Vernon School District maintained enrollment because of the lack of options. What charter schools have done is create an opportunity for families to not settle for the insufficient educational system. For years, parents and families begged for help, support, and assistance. The district continues to ignore that, I'm sorry, the district continues to ignore what is being asked and ignore the requests. Now, we are being threatened with closures that will destroy the livelihood of many, not being able to access a school that is in walking distance, having to pay for transportation through the district who destroyed its own transportation affiliation with unprofessionalism. The parents have spoken and demanded better. There are hundreds of complaints that the board and acting superintendent ignored and swept under the rug for years. Now that the families who counted, who counted on not being able to pay the $18,000 a year tuition in private schools now have the option to step away and be all for education their children deserve, you want to blame them and everyone, you want to blame them and everyone for the way the district has been handled. I watched my kids go to Graham, and we had, they had a music performance. And what made me want to take my kids away was that I watched while other kids in other schools were doing so much at the music performance, and my kids were doing some mediocre stuff. And everyone else watched, and they were so proud, and I was proud to see my daughter up there. But it wasn't the same. Like, I love my children, and I really want them to have the best. And since they've been at Honor Academy, from the first day, they've been excited to go to school. They've been happy to go to school. They love their environment. They love their environment better than what they did before. Taking this away from them is not what they need.
My kids went to Honor Academy, that's homes, right? Yeah, they thrived there, and they're thriving now. But today, I want to address an issue that strikes at the heart of equity and opportunity in our society. The permanent closure of schools in our most vulnerable neighborhoods. On the surface, these closures may seem like budgetary decisions or efforts to consolidate resources. But to the communities affected, they are far more than that. They are a loss of opportunity, stability, and hope. I know you think it's easy to count out the South Side because you think they do not care because of low voter turnouts. But let me just say that we are passionate about our community and the fabrics that hold it together. So please, don't take our silence, our passiveness to your systems as a weakness because we don't play about our babies. Let us not forget that the majority of school closures occur in neighborhoods already grappling with poverty, systemic racism, and lack of investment. Nationally, African-American students are four times more likely than white students to be affected by a school closure. These closures disproportionately impact students who already face systemic barriers to success. They widen the achievement gap, making it harder for these students to climb the socioeconomic ladder. These are not new statistics. So I want to know, who is making these decisions for our Black and Brown children? Is it people that have no connection to our city and community, or people who do not have children in the district, so their biggest concern is the dollar? Out of 6,772 students, 755 are homeless. That's 11.15%. 30 have IEPs, that's .44%. You did not raise taxes, and many were voted in because they ran a campaign that promised no tax increase. So where's the plan to sustain with no tax increase? Clearly, you had a plan, it was your campaign, and the people trusted you and voted you in. You want us to believe that instead of investing in restorative practices, professional development, and curriculum expansion, you would rather close school buildings in already suffering neighborhoods that can negatively impact all, from the emotional toll on the students to the undervalued marginalization of families? That's your plan? The effects of school closures go beyond the students and families they directly affect. They ripple out into the broader community. Students and families often feel abandoned by the very institutions meant to support them. Vacant school buildings become symbols of neglect, contributing to urban decay. Property values in neighborhoods with school closures have been shown to drop by as much as 10%. Please be clear. The solution is not to abandon struggling schools. It is to invest in them. We must ask ourselves, what kind of society do we want to build? The permanent closure of schools in vulnerable neighborhoods is not just a local issue, it's a moral one. Every child deserves access to quality education, no matter their zip code. Every neighborhood deserves the stability and opportunities that a strong school provides. I urge you, whether you are a policymaker, an educator, or a concerned citizen, to think about the long-term consequences of these closures. Advocate for equitable funding, demand transparent decision-making, support innovative solutions that keep schools open and thriving. Because when we close a school, we do more than shut a building. We close the door on dreams, potential, and progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erica Peterson. Before I get into this, I have two questions. If we have began the process for searching, thank you, thank you, for the superintendent search, if that process has begun. Second, what is the district, what is going on, the district's view? I haven't seen anything on the website, nothing spoken about New York State's proposal for regionalization. I would like to know what's going on with that, especially with the condition that we're in right now. Good evening, board trustees, acting superintendent, cabinet staff members, and public. I wanted to point a few things out this evening because I thought that from the last regular board meeting, you all agree to cease and desist the finger-pointing and name-blaming of the city for the school district's self-imposed financial disastrous situation we're in right now. Although what I just saw this afternoon on the news, you guys are still blaming the city. I wanted to educate the public about a few things. The budget for the city of Mount Vernon, New York, is around $72 million. $72 million. The budget for this school district is around $272 million. $72 million for a city, $272 million for a school district. Think of the math there. Excuse me, I'm speaking. You all cannot sit there and continue to blame the city for owing the district $11 million, which they are currently paying, when you have a budget three times the size of theirs. Three times. According to the New York State, because you know I love a fact, according to the New York State School Tax Enforcement Law Section 1334, right to recover school tax, the school district has every right to sue homeowners who do not pay their school taxes, but you choose not to. So instead, you shift the responsibility over to the city to attempt to collect taxes that the school district failed at doing so. Because at the end of the day, the city has to provide the school district with that funding. So when this is done, and due to the school board consistently putting forth 0% tax increases, which Sister Anissa just stood up here and said, because several of you have ran on that for almost a decade, and look where that's put us now. Look where this 0% tax increase has put us now. Trustee Saunders, trustee Kerwin, trustee Kelly.
Excuse me, excuse me, no names.
Oh, sorry.
Please, if you're going to speak, please.
So when this is done, so when this is done, and do, do not, excuse me, do, when this is done, and due to the school board consistently putting forth the 0%, the 0% tax increases for the past decade, this forces the city to now have to raise property taxes more significantly to make up for what the school district has not been able to collect. And guess what? I can guarantee the same folks who have not been paying the school taxes more than likely haven't paid their property taxes either. So you're forcing us families who do pay our taxes and actually have children who attend the school district in a very unpleasant and stressful situation that needs to be fixed. Over the past year, the district has paid $300,000 for one legal case for a reassigned superintendent. So not only have we paid over $300,000 for one case, but we have paid almost half a million dollars in the salary for that individual to be at home. Almost half a million dollars. Either you all think this community is stupid, or we don't read, but we do read, and we pay very close attention to what's going on. The majority of voters who vote, they do live around the Pennington and Trappagan school areas. I'm a Trappagan parent myself. So think about that. But their schools, our schools, we won't be affected by this reconfiguration as far as closing.
Thank you.
It's time, we, enough is enough. Enough is enough.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson, Ms. Patterson.
I'm Peterson.
Whatever. Call my name.
Thank you. Cynthia Crenshaw.
I'm not scared. Better be known. Get up there, call my name. No, enough is enough. It was said, enough is enough. I'm scared of nobody. Okay.
And I was going to say a lot of what Ms. Peterson said because I didn't know what she is saying. But let's see, let's talk about how we got here because there's a lot of finger pointing. And it is true, like she said, that between the superintendent home, our loving acting superintendent, and the legal fees, we are well over $1 million, which is well over, seriously, we are well over $1 million. And now, they're saying that Benny, well, I can't call no names, anyway, the ones that are sitting home, she is the cause of this district that is going broke. Not only she, I can read it to you, not only she is the cause, but also the taxes that has not been collected. And according to City Hall, they have been paying the taxes. Now, you guys have been telling us for, I don't know how long now, how deep the taxes are. I've asked you at the last meeting, is it possible for Jose and Martin, the controller, to come in here and speak to us themselves and let us hear what they are saying? Because you, it's just so much contradiction here, and it's not fair. It is just not fair. And now, we're at the point that you're closing schools. You're talking about closing Parker, which is considered a historic Black school. And let me just say this, you cannot just close schools because you want to hold your friend's school up. You cannot do that. It's not fair. Everybody's in this dog-dog fight now. And another thing, can we get a printout of how much it's going to cost each school for repairs for the upkeep? Being that it's our money, are we allowed to see that report? How much each school is going to cost? What is the capacity that each school can hold? It's time to stop the nonsense. It's time for all of us to work together and not, and stop the fighting. Because there is fighting going on, there's pointing, they're saying Benny, what did they say about, currently, the district is so broke that it is forced to reorganize, which includes consolidating schools and reducing staff. Benny Conroy is holding the city, particularly the children of Mount Vernon captive, as she has received nearly $1 million, which represents three years of her salary. The lawyer is, has got just as much money as she has from this arbitration going back and forth. We got all these lawyers, we got all these titles here. We have to stop, y'all. Let's work together and get Mount Vernon back on track. You're spending too much money. Not only with what's going on here, but there is a lot of mismanagement going on in our district with the money. Let's stop it. And please, because... It's not right. You have to do what's right. And being that, oh, my time is almost up, let me share this with you. Why is our kids receiving stuff like this? Receiving stuff like this? Molded breakfast. Molded breakfast. Why? I've, I don't know what school it is, I just got to take this to the media. And last week, I received a picture of kids receiving two sticks, two cheese sticks, and maybe three or four carrots. Let's get Mount Vernon back! And let's stop! We can all work together. You can learn to disagree and agree, like we say in church. But let's get it together and stop it. It's too much money being wasted. It's mismanagement. We have this lady sitting home making all this money, we paying all these lawyers, all this money. It needs to stop!
Thank you, Ms. Crenshaw.
Okay, but just stop it, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Crenshaw.
All right. Okay, just stop it. And we are going to work together, right? Okay. All right.
Thank you. Brenda Crump.
Good evening, everyone.
I am scared of nobody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Don't bother to call my name.
Can I have my, my time? Because I was distracted, I thought maybe I should be listening to what the conversation was up there. Can we start that? Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I would like to start out with an excerpt of the Mount Vernon City School District's December 2nd, '24 message to the community. But before I do that, I want to know, who is this message coming from? Is it coming from the Board President on behalf of the Board, the trustees? Is it coming from the acting superintendent with the approval of the Board? There is no letterhead. Everyone have a letterhead, the superintendent, acting superintendent has a letterhead which states it's coming from her or the Board. We don't have any of that. The excerpt I'd like to read is, quote, "We also must acknowledge that the Mount Vernon community voted down an increase of only 0.5% in 2022." Another question, "we." Who is "we"? Now, I would like to play something for the community.
Mount Vernon, on May 17th, there will be a taxpayer revolt and a campaign to properly educate students. The school district just received $21 million in federal money and millions more from the state, yet they want to raise your taxes. The state comptrollers cited the school district for misappropriating millions of our tax dollars. Yes, millions. They are robbing the students of an education and their safety. Before we give them another dime, we must force the school district to open their books and perform audits. Vote no for the school budget and no to more taxes. If we fail to stop this travesty, students and taxpayers will suffer. On May 17th, vote for the school board candidates Lorna Kerwin on 2A, Adrienne Saunders 3A, and Mark Lency 6A. They are running to protect students as well as taxpayers.
So, with that said, I want to add in now, again, I asked the question, "we." Who is "we"? In 2022, the current president now was the president then in 2022. The Board took a vote as to what budget to put before the community. The majority said put forth a 0.5%. The current president now and the president then at that time went against the majority vote of her colleagues and campaigned to vote down the budget. Again, I ask, "we." Who is "we"? When we have sitting trustees that go out and campaign against what the majority of their colleagues voted for to put forth to the community? Having consecutive 0% tax levy budgets, I like to keep things layman and simple. If you have a checking account, tax levy, and you don't put any money in the checking account, and you continue to write checks, what do you think will happen? I'm going to pause right now, because I'll be back, because this message that came from whomever to the community, I'm going to break this down segment by segment. So I'm starting with this. Again, I ask, "we." Who is "we"? I'll read the quote again. "We also must acknowledge that the Mount Vernon community voted down an increase of only 0.5% in 2022." Again, I ask, "we." Who is "we"?
Thank you, Ms. Crenshaw.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mark Stuckey.
I'm going to say that she was a trustee, she did nothing. Do not call me for a minute.
All right. Madam President, I have a folder here that I would like to have handed to you so that everybody can see it. It's pertaining to, how would we say, a hiring that's been done illegally. So, I'm not mentioning no names, but the process was done wrong, and you're giving up a lot of money. And what's taken place is, we looking to save money. And this is how we start saving on smaller scales and work our way up. So please, if you don't look at it, then everybody would know that, hey, you don't care no more. Here. The next thing is, I've been out for a while, and everybody want to know, what's wrong? What's wrong? I'm a survivor. I'm a cancer survivor. And I'm here to tell you today, right, I'm making it. I am a child of the Most High, and He gots my back. With that said, I left out, and I came back yesterday to start my first day, and I was violated. Employees went into my area and ripped the doors off my cabinets to get into my tools and came up with a lame excuse, we don't know who did it. I asked for an investigation to take place, and I knew what the investigation was going to come out. Oh, nobody knows anything. But you know, we living in a time now that's getting to be more and more ugly. Racism prejudice is rising rampantly. And I, I have a feeling I understand why it's all about, because I started blowing the whistle. And that whistle still haven't been answered. The person who wind, I blow the whistle on, the administrators that had fault, and you allow that individual to steal money from the taxpayers. Many have gone to prison for this. Do your due diligence. He's, that individual is supposed to be coming up on a resolution tonight. You better look at it. He's under investigation still, not by you, but by the union. And if nothing's going to take place, remember, I am covered by the whistleblowing policy by the state of New York. So if anyone decides to come after me, I promise you, I will give you a good fight. Not only that, but as a cancer survivor, oh, boy, I never knew how much weight I have behind me. So let's do the right thing. One more thing, I'm in alignment of closing down a school. Columbus School must, and it needs to be closed down. I'm sorry if the parents don't like that. I am humbly sorry. But that building needs to close. We had a five-year window period, we're down to two, I believe, to fix those ceilings. It will cost this district so much money to rip down every single ceiling in the classrooms, hallways, closets, to fix that place up. Not only that, but when it rains, it floods out the boiler room and the whole entire cafeteria, the gym, the mechanical area. So keeping something that's not worth anything, if you, if you know your history, that building was supposed to be closed a long time ago. But it was manipulated to keep it open. Look at the documents, please.
Thank you. That ends topic comments this evening. Superintendent?
There will be two presentations this evening. Dr. Jamal Doggett will introduce both of the presenters. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Well, we have two presentations under the Department of Curriculum and Instruction tonight. One, we're going to do a literacy presentation for Ms. Mary Beth Rhodes, who is Director of Humanities. She's going to give you an update on our literacy program, K through 12. And immediately after that, we're going to have Ms. Angela Hall, the Creative Director of the Arts, give a presentation on what's been happening and what's new in the Arts Department. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mary Beth Rhodes.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, President Saunders, Vice President Kelly, Board Members, our Acting Superintendent, Dr. K Veronica Smith, our Central Office Administration, and the Mount Vernon City School District Community. My name is Mary Beth Rhodes, and I'm the Director of Humanities, which includes ELA, Social Studies, Reading, and Library Media. This evening, I will give you a literacy update for grades K through 12. This evening, we will look at our Y as a district. We will look at the science of reading and as it pertains to literacy briefs and the work that we are doing. I will give you some updates from our ELA committees, both K-8 and 912. I will share with you some of our updates from the rollouts and the PD updates for our teachers, administration, school building administration, and district-level administration. Next slide, please. You can go to the next one. Our Y. This year, we are focusing on writing. I know you've heard it several times. The application of writing. Rich content-based literacy instruction supports students' ability to write about what they read and to craft different types of writing products to match the purpose, audience, and subject area conventions, and genres. We have been doing a lot of work around this because we know this is important. Our studying of the science of reading has told us that we have to have a comprehensive plan that includes reading and writing together. Next slide. Last year, I presented a little bit on the science of reading, our high-impact instructional practices, which is the how we teach our students. So for example, when we think about literacy instruction and we think about reading and writing and the two together, we have to give students the opportunity for text-based discussions and writing opportunities. So this might look like written responses based on text, either literary or informational. This might look like book reports, author reviews, or research-based writing. Next slide. It might also look like daily writing instruction in all grade levels, again, research-based writing, direct explicit instruction, writing from multiple sources, and establishing writing portfolios. Next slide. On the screen, you will see Scarborough's rope. If you are familiar with the science of reading, you know the science of reading tells us, for students to be skilled at reading, there must be direct explicit instruction that encompasses language comprehension and word recognition. You cannot have one without the other. And as I shared last year, all of the reading wars about phonics instruction, word knowledge, comprehension, what's missing, we know that you have to have both. So language comprehension includes background knowledge, vocabulary knowledge, language structures, verbal reasoning, and literacy knowledge. Word recognition includes phonological awareness, decoding and spelling, and sight recognition. If you look at the rope, you will see it's combined. That gives us our skilled reading, which is fluent execution and coordination of word recognition and text comprehension. That's how quickly our students can read through texts, how they can recognize words. That is the goal, that is what we're trying to do. Next slide. In addition to our understanding of the science of reading, we have to look at the briefs from New York State. Last year, New York State was very specific about several components that must be included in our instruction. I intended all of the workshops from BOCES to learn more about this work and bring it back to our district. New York State said that we have to have a program that is inclusive of the big six: oral language, phonological awareness, phonics, comprehension, fluency, and vocabulary. And how we achieve that is through the high-impact instructional practices. Next slide. The seven briefs again, so briefs one and two. Brief one is all about the definitions, key ideas. Brief two, some of the misconceptions, again, what I just shared about the reading wars. Brief three is that connection between reading and writing, which we are focusing on as a district this year. And briefs four through six outline what this looks like by grade level. And then, brief seven is a call to action for administration. Next slide. So the science of reading. What we know about the science of reading, number one, it must be instruction that is research-based. Number two, it must extend from early childhood through adolescence. There must be an emphasis on the big six that I just shared with you. It has to include culturally responsive teaching, and it must include instructional practices, such as those high-impact instructional practices. If you remember anything that I say tonight, please remember the big six and high-impact instructional practices. That is the language that we are using with our teachers, that is the language that we are using as we update our units of study. Next slide. So there are some misconceptions about reading. So some might think that the science of reading is one instructional approach. We know that is not true. We know that this is a term that references 50-plus years of research to guide instruction. Some might say that with the science of reading, we teach skills in isolation, but that is not the case. We look at word knowledge, phonics, phonemic awareness, and reading comprehension. Some might say that the science of reading might only include phonics and decoding, but that is not true. The science of reading equals explicit, intensive phonics and decoding plus language and comprehension. And some might say that the science of reading is not culturally responsive, but we know that it is. Next slide. The reading and writing connection. Reading fuels the writer with ideas, language, and ways to structure and illuminate the written piece's purpose. And writing promotes a deeper understanding of any text, further building language, knowledge, and communication skills. What we know is that students have to write about what they are reading. They have to write from multiple sources, from literary text and informational text. And this extends from elementary through high school. Next slide. Brief four is all about pre-K and Dr. Gail Lightwallis. I know she's doing a wonderful job with pre-K and sharing of the science of reading. I believe she's presenting at the next meeting, so I know she'll talk about that. If we go to the next slide, the early elementary years, there is a focus on text-based discussion and writing opportunities, and engagement with a variety of high-interest and diverse texts. And if you go to the next slide, you will see that it is the exact same thing for our secondary students. Those text-based opportunities coupled with a variety of text. Next slide. Brief seven, this, I like to call this our call to action. This tells us what we need to do as a district. So we have already completed the first two steps as a district, our curriculum and instruction team. We have a really good understanding of the science of reading. We have a really good understanding of what we currently have in place and the things that we need to do to make it better. We are living in steps three, four, and five. We are, we are constantly cultivating those opportunities for our teachers to learn and having systems in place to identify students. further building language, knowledge, and communication skills. What we know is that students have to write about what they are reading. They have to write from multiple sources, from literary text and informational text. And this extends from elementary through high school. Next slide. Brief four is all about pre-K and Dr. Gail Light Wallace. I know she's doing a wonderful job with pre-K and sharing of the science of reading. I believe she's presenting at the next meeting, so I know she'll talk about that. If we go to the next slide, the early elementary years, there is a focus on text-based discussion and writing opportunities and engagement with a variety of high-interest and diverse texts. And if you go to the next slide, you will see that it is the exact same thing for our secondary students. Those text-based opportunities coupled with a variety of text. Next slide. Brief seven, I like to call this our call to action. This tells us what we need to do as a district. So we have already completed the first two steps as a district, our curriculum and instruction team. We have a really good understanding of the science of reading. We have a really good understanding of what we currently have in place and the things that we need to do to make it better. We are living in steps three, four, and five. We are constantly cultivating those opportunities for our teachers to learn and having systems in place to identify student needs and also having structures in place for assessment. Next slide. I just gave you a lot of information about the science of reading. You're probably wondering, what specifically are we doing here in Mount Vernon? So we have two ELA committees, and thank you for your support. We have our K-8 committee. Currently, those teachers and administrators, and I'm going to share their names with you in a little bit, they are revising and editing our maps that are on the district website. They are creating a framework for teaching inclusive units that have Foundations, Foundations, Learning A to Z, Scholastic, Literacy Pro, and iReady. Those are all of our supplemental resources. We have created standard-based Common Assessments. So far, we have administered two on the K-8 level. We are working on the third. And we have a system for professional development, which I'm going to give you an update on that as well. My nine-through-12 committee, which is made up of teachers and administrators as well, has put in place a research-based writing component for all high school students. This was not in place. But this is something that our team worked very hard to put together, really specific by grade level, because we know it's important that students can write, can do research. These are skills, these are soft skills that students should have when they leave high school. We have a plan for outlining portfolios. And again, we are working at the high school level on incorporating those high-impact instructional practices into our units of study. I shared with you in the spring last year that I started my work at the high school level, and I did that for a reason, because we know this writing piece was missing, and it was a priority for us. Next slide. Again, just a little bit more on the updates. I have sample Common Assessments to show you and the assignments broken down for the nine-through-12 research-based assignment. Next slide. Oscar, are you able to click on any of those? Or I can send them to you. These are sample assessments. Is it better if I send them to you? Grades three and five? Okay, so I'll send those to you. Next slide. So how to write an effective research question. So this is something that our teachers received professional development on on November 5. It was an in-person PD at Mount Vernon High School. It was a very rich session. We had a whole group session in the library, and then we broke out into breakout rooms by grade level, nine-through-12. And the whole purpose of this PD is to equip our teachers with the skills necessary to teach our students the research-based writing process. Next slide. Here's a sample. So if we have a topic, maybe it's climate change, students are encouraged to narrow that down. So what about climate change? The impact of climate change on coastal cities. But that's still not enough. You have to turn that into a question. So how is climate change affecting coastal cities? And then a little bit more specific, how is rising sea level due to climate change impacting coastal infrastructure in the United States? So this is a lot for our students to do. We want to encourage them to be critical thinkers. And when they're thinking of their topics for research, let it be something that they're interested in, maybe something close here in the Mount Vernon community, the New York State area. Just something that they're passionate about, because we know when we're passionate about something, we're really interested in it, and we want to learn more about it. Next slide. These are the research-based assignments. So English I, which is our ninth-grade students, all students will write a mini research-based assignment of at least two pages with three to five sources. English I-H and English II, so our honor students and our 10th-grade students, they will write a paper of a minimum of three pages and three to five sources. English II-H and English III, these are our students who take the English Regents. So our assignment was very carefully selected because we want students to continue preparing for the Regents, so they're going to build upon their argument essay, and they must use three to five sources. Next slide. Our seniors, our ELA IV students, will write a five-page research paper with five to seven sources. And then our AP Literature and Language students and our IB students at Mount Vernon High School, they have carefully selected assignments based on those courses. So as you can see, we have assignments from English I all the way up through AP and IB for all students. All students are included. Next slide. I do want to take the time, and I do want to read everyone's name. My two committees have been working really hard. We meet in person. We meet on Zoom. We're texting. We're calling each other. These teachers and administrators are doing a fabulous job, and I do want to recognize them for their work. So our K-8 Literacy Planning Committee, Dr. Seirai Crawford, Dr. Waterman, Ms. Green, Ms. Quinones Dixon, and our teachers, Ms. Batista, Mr. Berger, Ms. Cortio Brewer, Ms. Denapoli, Mr. Glenn, Ms. Mackenzie, Ms. Sansoda, Ms. Spencer, and Ms. Terry. And this is year two for the K-8 Planning Committee. My nine-through-12 committee, Ms. Linda Palumbo, one of the administrators, Ms. Anne Marie Carroll, Ms. Lisa Delaporte, Ms. Laura Dupree, Ms. Alexandra Sherlock, and Ms. Rachel Weiss Roberts. So thank you to those committee members. They have been doing a great job. Our work is collaborative in nature, as it has to be. Our teachers are in the classrooms. They know what our students need, and they share that with our committees, and that becomes the essence of our work. So I've shared with you a little bit about the science of reading. I've given you some updates. So now I want to tell you about the professional development that we have in place for our teachers, because this is a lot. So we have to make sure that our teachers are receiving the PD that they need. Foundations, as you know, is K-3. We are in our third year of implementation. Our teachers received a one-day in-person PD by grade band, and they have a follow-up of six virtual sessions that are based on topic and grade level. They also have ongoing PD and support through FunHub. All of our four sixth teachers received PD in Foundations through Learning A to Z. Learning A to Z is not new to us, but Foundations is. If you remember last year, I shared with you that our students in grades four through six were struggling with phonics and phonemic awareness. Did a lot of research to figure out what would be the best resource to help our teachers in helping our students with that type of instruction. And so we are using Foundations this year. Our teachers received one day in person to follow up virtual sessions, and they have ongoing support through the Teacher Resource page. Our teachers have also received ongoing PD from Curriculum Associates, also known as iReady. That includes in-person sessions, and right now, they are all enrolled in a mandatory five-part series on the science of reading. And lastly, our nine-through-12 teachers received the research-based writing. That's all been in-person during our superintendent's conference days, monthly department meetings, and PLC meetings. Next slide. Our building administrators are busy with professional development as well. They too have received PD on Foundations, one virtual session. They have an in-person session coming up in a few weeks, and they also have access to FunHub. Our building administrators also received PD on Foundations, excuse me, and they have upcoming support through the Resource page. They've received PD as well in iReady and in-person sessions on the science of reading that I facilitated. Next session. I'm sorry, next slide. Our district-level administrative team, particularly the CNI department, we too are also receiving professional development. Our professional development is centered around the science of reading. Last year, myself and Dr. Doggett, we attended a three-part series on the literacy briefs and brought that information back to the district. This year, Dr. Doggett has the entire CNI team attending the pre-K through 12 literacy study groups. This is a five-part series at Southern Westchester BOSI's. We've already attended two out of the five sessions. The PD is rich. The PD is helpful. The last session was all on E&amp;L and supporting our English Language Learner students. And that is more information that we will bring back to the district. Next slide. So how do we monitor all of this? Currently, we are on district walkthroughs. We started this week. Walkthroughs will continue through the rest of this week and next week. We have surveys and evaluations from our teachers and administrators, and we also have our assessment data. We have our data profile where we keep track of our Common Assessments, including the ELA-created Common Assessments and Foundations. And we also have our iReady data. So these are three ways that we are able to monitor instruction in addition to that professional development that we have provided to our administrators. That concludes my presentation. I thank you for your time. Does anyone have any questions?
I wanted to thank you for coming to the party of the science of reading.
Of course.
I'm looking forward to you rolling it out to the parents. The research-based
All the strategies.
Areas behind, yeah. The other thing is, the PDs that you're offering are from K through 12?
Through 12.
Okay, and I want to say thank you for the pre-K.
Oh, yes, pre-K, I'm sorry.
And I want to say thank you for rolling this out in our district in a timely manner, because I know it takes a lot of hard work. I'm so impressed by the teamwork that you put together.
Yes, thank you.
Because it takes the village, right?
It does.
And it seems like you have a good group of people who are working in our district to support our students. So I commend you on doing the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Kelly. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much for this presentation. I do have one question, and it really is relative to the data. When you do the district walkthroughs, how will you evaluate what that information provides for you? And how will you assist the teachers or support them once you get that feedback?
So it's a great question. So our CNI team, when we think about when we're going to do our district walkthroughs, first we think of an area that we want to look at. So the area this time that we're looking at is the application of writing, evidence of writing, and student, I'm sorry, and engagement in the classroom environment. So then we develop a rubric. And our team sat down in this room, and we developed rubrics that were grade-specific. And that, the data that we collect from those rubrics, that will drive the discussions with the administrators and then the teachers. So for example, when we walk into a K-3 classroom, we should see evidence of foundations. We should see the letter cards. We should see anchor charts. When we look at writing, we should see rubrics with the writing assignments. And that's all information that we document on our rubrics, and then we share that with the principals, and then they could share with the teachers.
Okay, and the display of the, I guess, the materials, I understand. What about the implementation? How will you evaluate that?
So for Foundations, that would be a separate walkthrough, specifically on Foundations. We did that last year. That is something that we will do again this year. Our principals had a PD session on Monday on how to monitor specifically Foundations and what to look for. So what we create is a checklist, if you will, or a look-for list of different items. And that lets us know a little bit more about the implementation and also the data profile. So the teachers are logging the assessment data from Foundations, so that lets us know what's going on.
Thank you. And what about the student achievement data?
Well, we look at iReady. We look at Common Assessments. We look at Foundations. We look at areas in Literacy Pro. So we look at multiple data points to let us know if our students are achieving. We have a new piece at the high school level, Renaissance, for MTSS to support that process. That's new for us this year, so that will also tell us a little bit more about student engagement.
Thank you for rounding that out for us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Greetings, everyone. So I wanted to have a little arts participation, if you will, a little poetry and music. If I can get everyone, we're just going to snap like this. Can we snap? Just snap. Right? And then we're going to say, yeah, everybody do that. Yeah. Yeah. A little poetry. Yeah. Greetings, President. Yeah. President Saunders. Yeah. Vice President Kelly. Yeah. All the board members. Yeah. Acting Superintendent. Yeah. Kay Veronica Smith. Yeah. Central Office. Yeah. And all of you. Yeah. In our community. Yeah. The arts. Yeah. Saves children's lives. Yeah. Let's do what we can do. Yeah. To keep the arts alive. Give yourselves a hand. Next slide, please. My name is Angela Hall. I'm the Creative Executive Director of the Mount Vernon City School District. And tonight, I'm just going to give you an overview of what we're up to in the arts. Benefits of arts education: creativity, academic success, well-being, social and emotional development, literacy, community engagement, critical thinking skills, collaboration, communication. Next slide, please. These are just some of the benefits. So here are our art goals in the Arts Department. Goal number one, child empowerment. Goal number two, curriculum empowerment. Goal number three, celebration empowerment. So we are looking to utilize these smart goals as our entryway into building on the arts in our school district. We want to empower children. We want to strengthen curriculum. And we want to encourage, promote, and create in-school celebrations and performances. Next slide, please. So what's happening in our school district in the arts? Take one. Action. Next slide. So right now, we are exploring new curriculum in all of our disciplines. We have usage of now what we call the Dance Studio syllabus. The Art of Education is our arts curriculum in K through 12. All of our teachers in all of our buildings have this resource. In instrumental and vocal music, we're using Alfred, Hal Leonard, and Forest Ettinge workbooks. And in theater, nine-through-12, we are using Drama Teacher Academy as well as Stanislavski, Hagen, Chekhov, and Meisner texts. And of course, we continue to use Quaver Ed in music in K through eight as well as Gateway to Art in nine-through-12. Next slide, please. Oh, yes. Oh, our arts integration rollout. So I did a survey to all of the teachers in the school district in ELA, and I asked for those who are willing to participate in an arts integration model. You want to start arts integration with willing participants. And so in all of our buildings, we were able to get about 40 volunteers. So there's representation in all our buildings, as well as the Gifted and Talented Program. They've already had their PD in the Gifted and Talented Program. And in January, we're going to roll out small arts enhancement techniques and activities to begin to introduce this idea of utilizing the arts to build academic capacity. Next slide, please. Oh. We have an online art gallery that's going to launch in December. Rebecca Turner, Mount Vernon High School, STEAM Academy, Denzel Washington School of the Arts. The online gallery is actually positioned and ready to launch. We're just waiting for a few more permission slips from students. Very excited about this. You're going to be blown away by the creativity and just the sheer talent of all of our children. That's a little Van Gogh for you right there, a little Starry Night in the background. Next slide, please. Oh, yes. So we were privileged to receive a grant from the Paul Taylor Dance Company in Lincoln Center, the Polaris Project. We had a Mount Vernon City School District Family Week at Lincoln Center. The Superintendent, Acting Superintendent, Dr. Kay Veronica Smith, she was able to come out. Next slide, please. Along with members, constituents from all over the entire school district, from the office to teachers to students. And about 300 people got together over the course of four days. We were able to go to Lincoln Center together and to see some live performing dance theater. It was absolutely phenomenal. We're still getting rave reviews about it. And we're looking to continue our partnership with the Paul Taylor Dance Company for next year. And they're also considering maybe giving us some scholarships and growing how they engage the district in this incredible opportunity. Could you imagine? Our people got on the train. They took airplane. I'm kidding. They got on the train. They got in their cars. They got on Metro North. They got on the Iron Horse on the weekend, and they met each other in Manhattan. It was fabulous. Next slide, please. Oh, the Carnegie Hall Linkup Program. So Nelson Mandela, Graham School, Hamilton, Parker, BTA, Grimes, and Trapp-Hagen, all of these schools are going to be a part of this initiative. Actually, it's already being rolled out. Students in all of these schools are going to be learning a supplemental music program on recorder, and the culminating project is in May of 2025. All of the students will go to Carnegie Hall and play with the live orchestra as part of the event. So I think we had maybe three schools have done this in the past, but we have seven schools going this year, so we're very, very excited about it. Next slide, please. Ah, the New York State Arts Pathway. So we wrote an application, and we were approved by the state to roll out this pathway in Mount Vernon High School, STEAM Academy, and Denzel Washington School of the Arts. in Mount Vernon High School, STEAM Academy, and Denzel Washington School of the Arts. This is a pathway for graduation. Another way that our students can walk through school with the lens of the arts, utilizing that three credit units over a three-to-four-year period. And it's a four-plus-one pathway where students are able to substitute, I believe, a Social Studies Regents. Instead of taking five Regents, they take four Regents plus three credit units in either dance, or theater, or science, I mean, or visual arts, vocal, or instrumental music. And so you can see each school has chosen which pathways they will present. So at Mount Vernon High School, we have music, theater. We have a new theater teacher at Mount Vernon High School. Very exciting. We also have a new vocal music teacher at Mount Vernon High School. Very exciting. We also have a new music teacher at STEAM Academy. Very exciting, right? So we're, we're utilizing the arts. I mean, some children, I'm telling you, the arts really does save lives. And for some students, just being able to take a music class every year for three years while in high school is going to help give them the motivation they need to get that piece of paper in the end. Next slide, please. Arc Stages. So we have a playwriting residency. This is also a grant that's happening. Trapp Hagen, DWSA, and BTA are participating. How this happens is, these children in, in the schools are engaged in a playwriting residency where they write their own plays. And then they, all of their plays are put into a competition. And at the end, the winning students get to have their plays performed by professional actors at Arc Stages. It's pretty incredible. Last year, Trapp Hagen and DWSA had students that won the competition. And so we're hoping this year, yeah, isn't that, that's absolutely wonderful. And we're hoping this year that Benjamin Turner also has a winner. And we get to all go up to Arc Stages and watch our children, watch their pieces, their work being performed by professional, and that's incredible. That's just incredible. It's just absolutely fantastic. So this is also a grant. Next slide, please. Ah, we have Williams, Parker, Grimes, and Graham School. They have 10-week writing, let's see. What a Graham and, Graham and Park, Graham, no, Parker and Williams have African Dance and Poetry residencies. And Grimes and Graham have playwriting residencies. So we're also trying to incorporate this idea of utilizing writing throughout the core content area and all of the arts disciplines. Next slide, please. We're continuing with our Youth Poet Laureate Program. So Caitlin Leslie is our current reigning champion. She is actually just submitted to become a regional winner. So we're hoping for the best for that. Next slide, please. So samples of writing in the arts. Now, I, I know that we want to make sure that we keep the arts authentic and that we don't overshadow what we do in the performing arts with writing. But understand, please, that there are, that writing is an intrinsic part of what we do in the arts. So I am really emphasizing to all of our teachers that they utilize the intrinsic parts of, like, for instance, in theater, playwriting is a part of writing in the arts. In dance, choreography, notation, blocking is a part of writing. So we're trying to stay authentic to the discipline and utilize what is intrinsically a part of the art form and enhancing that and showing our young people that, you know, you need to be a good, listen, you want to sign a contract, you want that big movie deal, you have to know how to read and write. So just always showing them that writing is an authentic part of the arts. Next slide, please. Additional initiatives, we have partnerships with Jacob Burns Film Center, Theater Development Fund, Project Rise, Symphony of Westchester, Carol Moore String Quartet, Music Team, Music Production Assemblies, Balance Arts Center, Designatronic Sound, so forth and so on. I just want to let you know that we are really doing what we can to make the arts come alive and to make it so that we are utilizing it in a way that helps our children build capacity and just to blossom into the beautiful, well-rounded human beings that we know they are. Thank you so much. I believe that, yes, that completes my presentation. The arts saves lives! The arts changes lives!
So can I, questions? See, I wanted to get you before you left. Thank you so very much for this really waking us up this evening. Your enthusiasm is contagious. I want you to remember, next time we have this, that you invite the board of trustees. We don't get paid to Lincoln Center or to some.
Oh, my gosh! Everybody, everybody.
I didn't, they didn't let me come.
Oh, I am so sorry.
I'm gonna.
I even ran into one or two in the street.
I think some of them, you know, they, but anyway, I, I love the fact that you're doing this in our district. Some of the concerns we heard in our district is, we have a lot of remediation for after-school. We want enrichment.
Yes.
Are you gonna be rolling this out, like, on after-school? I see you're incorporating it into the curriculum. That's a question for you to.
I would love to roll it out after-school. I know that we do have, over at Pennington, we do have Granville Mullings, who is going to be doing something with an after-school program there. But quite honestly, it costs money.
Yes, I heard you, I heard you got a couple of grants there. I heard you.
Yes, and so, and, and you know, tho- those types of grants, you have to work within the framework that you are given.
I know, but.
And so we can't utilize the resources and the money in that way.
Well.
But, yes.
Not in, not in paying the, the instructors.
Yes.
I'm saying, bringing those programs and then as a district, trying to figure out how to support them.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
I, I'm all for it. I would, the more, the merrier. I mean, if I could just... The grant writing? Oh, yes, yes. We, we do have a grant writer, and we are, we did, we did get to speak with them. And we are trying to find ways to branch out in that regard. So absolutely, yes. I would, I would love to see more things happening in the afternoons. And I do have some ideas and a proposal or two, but I haven't yet seen them come to fruition. But, hint, hint, but yes, I am absolute, and I, we also have an initiative with Kyle Olani Adams. I mean, there are so many things that I haven't even named, where he is actually connecting our children and giving them opportunities to expand and expose them to the professional world of art. And so there were some things that are happening after-school, and they're like in smaller pockets. But I would absolutely love the opportunity, and I'm willing to sit down and talk to anybody who's willing to listen, of expanding this to after-school. I think that we need the arts in the after-school, and I'm sad that it doesn't exist at this time. And I understand our financial limitations, but I am, I'm open, and I am welc, I, I welcome the conversation for how we can do that.
We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate you, right back.
Question, really quick, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall, you know, your energy has been amazing. And I've been, 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 bore witness to it for almost the better part of 10 years now. So I, I appreciate everything you do. You did mention the online art gallery.
Yes.
Is that gonna be on a district site?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be some sort of communication that goes out to parents?
Yes, so, so right now, we have the four, the four high schools, all of the submissions. The art gallery is actually set. We have been working with Carlos Ramirez, Gerstl, Carolyn Gerstl, and Jordan Solis. The, the art gallery is already up. The pub, the page is not public. You can click on each school, and you open it up, and you can see all of the wonderful work. We just need to get some permissions from some students before we make it public.
Okay, thank you.
And we had those conversations with the necessary persons to determine the legality, so forth and so on, which is why we're waiting for the necessary signatures on the okay to display students' names and/or their works of art. Yes.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I know that you were, we were in partnership with the Mount Vernon Art Council.
Yes.
Who did an after-school program in five schools last year.
Yes.
Are you working with, in partnership with them again to bring them back into the school district to have that after-school, the music after-school program again?
That would be lovely. So last year, they came to us with funding. They did a piece, another culminating piece at City Hall on yesterday. Again, at this point, I am not aware that there is money available to us or that is available to us as a resource. But if it is, I welcome it. So I guess I'll have to, to reach out.
Stay in touch to them, yeah.
Yeah, to the necessary persons, just to see if we can bring that back, if that money is still available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to committee reports.
Before we start, I'd like to just make a statement. If anyone can, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We've had a lot of questions about the reorganization of the schools. A revised school building configuration.
No, wait.
I ask if everybody can hear me. Can you hear me now? Louder? Closer? Better? Okay. We've had a lot of questions about the reorganization of the schools. A revised school building configuration proposal will be discussed for a compromise and cost-effective model at the town hall meeting on Friday, December 6, 2024, at Graham School in person at 6 o'clock. And it can be viewed via Zoom webinar. Please check your emails and the district website for login information. Thank you.
Committee reports. So, let's see, what committees, I'm gonna start with you, Elizabeth. I think she has some good, Elizabeth has good news.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I did make the survey, and I sent it out to Ms. James and the board president and the superintendent for it to be approved. And once that goes through, I'm going to talk to the principals to get approval from them. And then I'm going to send it out to Midland High School students, because that seems to be the biggest concern right now. And then, once we look at that, I, I'm gonna give the data to the wellness committee. That way, they can also talk about what the next step should be.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. So Audit Committee, Trustee Kerwin, I'm just gonna leave the floor to you for a few minutes, okay?
The Audit Committee, no, we didn't have any meeting. We did not meet after the last meeting. Should I do budget?
If you have any, any committee reports.
Budget, we did not meet. Also, the budget committee did not meet. However, I'd like to clarify one thing that a resident said tonight, that the school district should sue or could have sue residents who do not pay school taxes. The school district has no power to sue residents. It's up to the city. The city has, as the statute has it, the city has the power to sue or foreclose on properties that do not pay taxes, whether it's school taxes or property taxes. The school district does not have that authority to do so. And that's, that's it for the budget committee.
Thank you for clarifying that, Trustee Kerwin. Claims Committee, there is nothing. Education Committee? Yes, the Education Committee met. We discussed the iReady data, the 2023-24 New York State ELA and Math data, the Renaissance MTSS 9 through 12 initiative, and the Academic Power Hour update. And Dr. Doggett, if you would like to add some details about our Education Committee meeting. Mary Beth left with your notes.
Oh, she left with the mic.
No, no. It's not a problem. Well, we went over our iReady data beginning of the year for grades K through 8. We talked about the, how the iReady informs instruction for small group instruction moving forward for the RTI period. We talked about how the schools and principals develop action plans to also monitor their RTI, which is the MTSS, from now until the middle-of-the-year assessment. We've also went over the ELA and Math data, which I'll do a comprehensive presentation in January to the board regarding the scores that were in embargo until November. And we also reviewed the Academic Power Hour curriculum, which we discussed in our previously Education Committee meeting. And we went over the attendance for the Academic Power Hour, which was hovering around 75% at the time.
Okay, can you expand, or expand more on the Academic Power Hour? Is it still in effect in what grades, what's the attendance?
It's available grades K through 8. Certain schools have maybe grades 3, 4, and 5. Each school were, each school was given a specific amount of teachers. But based on the teacher availability, that determines the grade level. So you have K through 8, and some buildings, K through 6, 3, 4, and 5, and maybe 5, 6, and 7. Teachers are splitting assignments as well. And as far as the attendance by school, I don't have it off the top of my head, but overall, it was 75% for over the past three weeks. Saturday school for the high schools, Saturday Regents Prep started two Saturdays ago. And we had one attendance date at that meeting, and I believe it was around 62%, which is very good.
Okay, so the, so we still have the Academic Power Hour at all schools, basically? Nothing's been canceled?
Yes.
Because of lack of attendance?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to.
So really, what's gonna happen at the secondary level? Because the secondary level for the Saturday Regents Prep, the attendance was very minimal last year. So we keeping a close eye on that to determine how we're gonna have the Regents Prep Saturday program in the spring. Currently, we have it in four buildings, all four high schools. If the attendance is not making it, we're gonna probably combine it to one building to see what that looks like.
So we're encouraging parents to make sure their students seek what's available within our district.
Correct, and we're also reviewing that attendance weekly as it comes in.
That's what I want to.
I have a, I have a quick question. As far as the after, the after-school Power Hour, is it only for one hour? And how is the student selected? Can the parents sign up their child if they have interest in doing so? Or is it, are the students selected by the teachers?
The teachers, the students are selected by the teachers and sometimes the parents, because sometimes you don't have full classes, and it's also by availability. You don't want to have a class of 20, a full class in the afternoon, so also determines the numbers. You asked a question before that.
If it's, if it's for one hour, how long is the power?
Two hours.
Two hours?
Two hours, yes.
Okay.
So during that time, they can go over, it could be some enrichment, but for the most part, they have a curriculum that they review. They go over the prereq skills during that time, and also iReady lessons can be done during that time. So it depends how the teacher plans the lessons. So this curriculum is based on the deficient areas, deficiency areas on how that school performed for that year. So each school's curriculum could look slightly different after-school, depending on who's in the class. But there's an opportunity, if you have 12, 15 students, for the teacher to have one small group going on one side, and while, while they directly teach another group on one side as well.
So is it, is it not open to parents who want to sign up their child?
If there's space, yes.
If there's space.
If there's space.
So it's based on space?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question on clarification on space. The students that have signed up, but they may not necessarily be participating or showing up, then you will be able to slide those individuals in as a waiting list, as a waiting list?
Yes, there's a waiting list. So what happens is, is if a student is out, we call to try to get them back on. And if they continuously are not in, they can be replaced by students on the waiting list.
Okay, how many absences are you allowing in order for that to occur?
I don't think there's a set number. We just try to get them, we just try, it used to be like three or four, but sometimes it's extenuating circumstances, but it is a, a pattern of consistent absence. They replace that child.
Okay, have you identified individuals maybe in the past that may have accessed the Academic Power Hour, and they may not have had great attendance, and are they selected again? Or are we looking at that information so that we can make sure that we have access for most of our students?
I believe that varies from building to building. I've done that in the past as a principal as well, that there's been parents, you want to give them a second chance, but if the same thing happens again, you already know that they're not gonna make the program. But definitely in summer, in the summer school, it definitely happens.
I'm sorry, I should be asking superintendent, okay.
No, this is part of Education Committee report, so I'm still free.
Thank you.
Since you're one of the committee members.
Thank you, I know, thank you. And, but I am new to the committee, so I'm just trying to get some clarification, so I appreciate it. The other question that I have is, are there challenges with, when you have, when you have attendance of 6, 75% and maybe some of the teachers are there, and maybe they don't have an, students? Is there a challenge with student teachers not having anyone in the room? And is there an issue with them being paid or not being paid if there are no students? being paid or not being paid if there are no students that show up?
I haven't heard anything as of yet this year. I didn't oversee the after-school Academic Power Hour last year, but this isn't the first time I'm seeing it. I have, nothing's come my way except for the one I just heard just now.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes our report.
Thank you. So, facilities, that would be Trustee White and Mr. Maribel, Mr. Mitchell?
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. We had a facilities meeting on December 1st, and what we really discussed was the reorganization and discussed the benefits of why certain schools were chose for closing. So, that was the main issue of our meeting for December 1st.
Should I do, what else do you have?
Okay, we have not had a meeting for the HR, but I do have a Long Island University Hudson Graduate Center School of Education. This is good news, so listen, it would be, it will be on the website, so listen carefully. You can get your master's ed and students with disability from pre-K to 12 and literacy in all grades. The information is free information sessions on December 4th and December 11th at 3:00 PM and 5:00 PM. The link, LIU for the TA to Teachers Program. LIU Master's Ed and Students with Disability, pre-K to 12 and Literacy. LIU Advanced Certification and Special Ed, pre-K to 12. It's at discount rate, so anyone's interested, going back to school, yay! Going back to school, yay! Or trying to get into school. This is, look for this on the website. It looks like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have something to add for facilities. Part of what we discussed, and Trustee White, thanks for mentioning the reorganization.
Can you speak a little louder?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I have a real big mouth. So, we talked about the BCS report, which is the Building Condition Survey, and that was released to the public when we had it done at the end of 2023. So, I know we had someone speak tonight and ask, can they see the numbers by building, what the repair cost would be? And that should be something, it used to be on the district side, I believe, at one point. I'm not sure why it's gone. But can we have that returned to the district site so that it's not confidential? We released it to the public when KGND Architects came in and did the building survey in 2023.
I heard it was a.
Yeah, it's a one-pager. And Mr. Ramundi actually shared it with the committee before the facilities meeting, and it's very helpful. The questions can be answered by what's on it. You can truly see, and it'll give people an understanding as to why certain buildings are being chosen. I'm, I'm not gonna speak about the APH situation and teachers not getting paid, because I think it was mentioned, we had one of our very best and brightest here mention her situation with it today. And I did bring it up. It's been questioned, and I believe it's being investigated. The situ, okay. I'm also on the committee for the transition for transportation as well, and facilities transition regarding all the reorganization.
It's still facilities, right?
It's still.
Because there's a separate reorg committee, so you.
That's what, yeah. Still facilities.
Okay.
So, there are meetings that are happening regarding, from the facility side, regarding the transition as well. So, it's not just meetings for facilities, buildings, and grounds. There's meetings regarding the transition as well. So, hopefully, we'll have some presentation, there's some sort of visible, visibles to show everyone regarding how we're moving forward with that. That's all I have for facilities.
Do you have anything for the Wellness Committee? Okay. I mean, since, no, since we're skipping around, no, 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 then never mind, Warren, hold on.
Yeah, I just had a question about the building condition survey. Is it possible to release the entire report? Why just, I'm guessing that it's more than just that one page from the architect?
I heard it was 90 pages, that's why.
It's cheap to put digits online at this point, so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't put the entire buildings, condition, report online.
I don't have an objection to that.
I, I, personally, I'd like to see it. I haven't seen it myself. All I've seen is that one page. I've seen that one page, not the whole report.
I don't have a problem with it.
It was, it was presented at a public meeting here, the survey. We can go back and find the video where it was presented. And I don't recall anything in that presentation where he talked about confidential information that was not presented to the public. So, I, you know, I struggled, I struggled to understand why there was even a discussion about legality of a building condition survey that's mandated by the state of New York and paid for with taxpayer dollars.
Mr. Ramundi, we'll step out in faith and put, we'll put it up.
Regarding the Wellness Committee, we haven't had a meeting. We did receive word about the, the picture that one of our community members held up about breakfast that was fed to the stu, was given to the, or tended to give to the students that was moldy. And I'll be honest, it was appalling. We did get a letter from Principal Waterman to parents that, you know, described exactly how urgently it was addressed. We got a word out to and explanation, course of action from Aramark, which is the food service company that this district continues to deal with. And in all honesty, there's just, it's a constant chase to make sure we help, we do not have broken equipment, freezers are working so that frozen food can stay frozen and not be in the refrigerator, when, and that's how mold happens. When you have frozen food that you put in the fridge, it will mold, because it's supposed to be kept frozen. But when I tell you this, it's a constant struggle. Kids, I get pictures, my, my phone number scrolled on the bathroom somewhere, McDonald's, I don't know. I get text pictures, kids' plates, one, two mozzarella sticks and a carrot, or one chicken tender. These are high school kids. These are, you know what I'm saying? So, fighting that fight to continue to get food equity is also an uphill battle, which we're continuing to fight. And with, is it still Mr. Ramundi, or is it Mr. Formoso? So, it's, so it's back to Mr. Ram, okay, so, back to Mr. Ramundi. So, we're still fighting that. I'm continuing. So, just so you know, I was on the, the moldy pancakes the moment I saw it, and I got on everybody's nerves.
I don't, can I just comment on, I don't think you, no, I don't think you get on anybody's nerve. I think that protecting the interests of our community is important, but we should investigate and confirm before we come out with any public statements. So, I'm hoping that that's what we're gonna get from the superintendent, that, a report on this issue that's happening, right, based on your committee report.
I indicated that, or we provided a preliminary report from Aramark, as Trustee Mitchell wanted something immediately, right away, not yesterday. So, we sent him what we had. He had follow-up questions. We're checking into the freezer the question, but we got to you what we had immediately. And we also sent out, I sent the letter that the principal sent out.
So, what did the students have in place of that?
That I'm not aware of, because the truth is, that wasn't even on the menu for that day. So, the menu, so everybody, if you don't know, the, the district menu is on the district site. You can see it, the menu for elementary school and high school. For whatever reason, that breakfast was about to be given to students, but that wasn't what was on the menu for that day. So, that's another confusion. But that's one of the questions. I know Dr. Smith said she's gonna answer. I'm not certain what was given as a, as a replacement.
That's backup or whatever?
I have no clue.
Did they eat? I mean, you know.
Well, I should.
Did they eat carrots and?
Since we have Dr. Waterman in the audience, she, no. Oh, yeah. You don't wanna?
Thank you. Good evening, guys.
Again, yes, was traumatized by the moldy pancake situation, Moldgate we had yesterday. Once we realized what was going on, we, of course, threw everything out. We always keep extra food in the school. Some students had their own food from home, so the teachers had them eat that instead. But students that did not have whatever we had available, sometimes there's extra snacks from the after-school program and things. We don't throw things in the garbage. We keep them. And because we always have children who are hungry in the building, so we had cheese, we had yogurt, we had Scooby snack, you know, bit things, whatever, whatever they asked for. If they were hungry, we made sure that they ate. So, there were options available for all children who asked for it in the building.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. It was only at Williams? I'm sorry.
That's the only school that we received, Kar, some sort of communication about showing us. That's what happened. We, the chase is on for all the buildings. There are issues in almost all the buildings with food services and what the kids are eating, and it's a steady uphill battle.
Can I concur too with what Mr. Mitchell is, Trustee Mitchell is saying, that I went into Rebecca Turner one morning, and all they sent for breakfast was juice and milk.
Was it yesterday?
It was about a week ago. It was juice and milk, no food. So, you know, those are things that really do need to be addressed.
Okay. So, we did family community engagement. Trustee Middleton, do you have anything?
We're in the process of orchestrating things because there was changing of the guards. So, because there was changing of the guards, and we're in the process of orchestrating things. So, we should be having an upcoming meeting soon this month, and then we'll have a committee report for the next time around.
Thank you so much. Trustee McDonough, IDA?
December 12 is the next IDA meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Insurance, we have nothing?
No, nothing. We haven't met.
Policy, we're meeting next week. Safety, Trustee Jenga?
Good evening. We had our safety meeting yesterday. Security is now distributing additional supplies to the schools. We are also on track to conduct all NYS requirement for emergency drills by December 31st to ensure students and staff are trained and prepared for emergency situations. And we also spoke about the metal detectors and hiring of more security guards. That's it.
We also mentioned about the cease and desist on pat downs, which we communicated several weeks ago. We discussed that, that initiative that Directive has come out. So, and the other part, and to piggyback off of Trustee Jenga, the scanners, which we remember Rebecca Turner, we talked about their severe need for a scanner in their building, and that's something that Mr. Ramundi said he would look into as far as cost. And of course, we're talking about reorganization involved in that conversation, so I just wanted to bring that up.
I have a question for safety. Do we have warrants that this, these?
Yes.
Okay. And, and we have enough in the district to serve all buildings?
Yeah. Mr. Ramundi, can you speak more about?
Yes.
Okay, special education, Chris, nothing?
That meeting is also scheduled for December 12.
Okay.
Kind of busy day.
Okay, technology, Trustee Maribel?
We are gathering our schedules together so that we can reconvene.
And that concludes committee reports.
Do we have any old business?
No, old business was what I discussed earlier.
All right, we're gonna move on to our resolutions. Okay, we're gonna move on to our resolutions.
Sure.
Can I have a motion for 5.1, Human Resources, 116A?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.2, request for a leave of absent?
Motion.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.1, updated appointment of technology links for the 24-25 school year?
Motion, second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.2, authorization to hire additional staff after school?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.1, approval of pupil personnel services memorandum number 10 dated December 3, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.1, authorization of the replacement of the cooling systems at Trapegen Elementary and Grimes Elementary Schools?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
And, and I just wanted to clarify in front of the public. We did ask the question, we're going to see the numbers before we actually vote for the cost on these, on these, the, the cooling system, this, this resolution. We're gonna see all the numbers first so that we can, will it be comprehensive? No, 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 I just, no, 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 this is, this is just us moving forward to get pricing, correct?
Yes.
And the board will see the breakdown in comprehensive pricing before we vote on the actual movement. Okay?
Yes.
That's all, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.1, to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, we, we may, I think we're gonna do it in the back, I don't know. We are, we probably will not be coming back. I think we.